Welcome to today's city council meeting, City of Series, Monday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera. Present. District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Today, we have an invocation by Jim Stolcho, who will be on Zoom. Is he there? Yes, he is. Followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Good afternoon. Great to be with you. Let's pray. Gracious and loving God, watcher over all that we do and supplier of all that we need. Thank you for your many blessings to ourselves and our city. For life itself, for our friends and family and our community, our schools, our businesses, everything that we enjoy. God, you are attentive to the many complex issues that confound us. Therefore, we pray for our mayor and this council and for the many city workers charged with carrying out policies. We pray your blessing on the deliberations and decisions made tonight, that they may be just and good. To that end, we pray that you would grant each person here a listening ear, clarity of speech, and your wisdom. Pray for the agenda set before us. May what is said and done here please you and benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city. In Jesus's name, amen.
Today, we have a presentation. This is a service award for Captain Johnson, Lieutenant Gribble, and Sergeant Berber, and Berber is not here today. And this will be taken care of by our chief, Chris Perry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I stand before you this evening with great honor and pride to present these two fine men with distinguished service awards for being city employees for twenty-five years, the last twenty-five years. I've known both of these gentlemen since we were about fifteen years old and have grown up with them as friends and through the department as coworkers as well. Both of them were hired by the city on August eighteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, together on the same day. Throughout both of their careers, they've worked a gamut of assignments to include patrol, field training officer. Both have been SWAT members. Captain Johnson was a SWAT team leader, I believe, at one time. Lieutenant Gribble was the assistant team leader and team leader. And both have been detectives and have worked just a whole host of assignments at the police department. Both of them have given a lot of sacrifice to this organization. Both have been in extreme critical incidences throughout their careers. And then both have rose through the ranks together. Ironically, both were actually promoted to lieutenant even on the exact same day as one another. And then since then, now Trenton Johnson has promoted to captain and then Lieutenant is lieutenant. So at this time, it is my great honor and privilege again to recognize both Captain Johnson for twenty-five years of service. There's a plaque for you, sir, and Lieutenant Gribble for twenty-five years of service. Congratulations. I'll turn it over in case they want to maybe say a word or two. I would like to say thank you. The City of Series has definitely given the three of us, I would say couldn't be here tonight, but City of Series has definitely given us a lot of opportunity to grow in our career. And I can tell you, speaking for myself, I still wake up every morning happy to go to work. So thank you. And I would also like to thank the HR department and Delilah especially for these. This means a lot. I think moving forward over the past couple of years, it really seems like we have come together as a family with an employee luncheon, and I credit the HR department, council, and the rest of the city staff for that. So thank you very much. CJ has already said what I we're behind there.
Thank you very much.
We will now move on to citizens communications. Thank you, gentlemen. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopt the rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution two thousand and seven one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not posted on the agenda. May be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any item on the agenda, subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chambers doors. I do have some yellow cards. First person I have is Linda. This is on the subject of the Tuolumne River Park, Tuolumne River Park.
Good evening. My name is Lyndon Chambers. I'm a resident of Series. I thank the council and the mayor for this opportunity to come before you. Unfortunately, I missed the special meeting that was hosted six days before the meeting. I watched the agendas pretty closely, but I was out of town and missed that particular one. I did want to come and share a couple of quick thoughts about the Tuolumne River and also the flea market, if I may address both of those in my five-minute timeframe. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Casey for your statement at the last meeting. I did listen to the entire meeting. And also, of course, it followed this in the newspapers. When you made the statement that the City of Series is responsible for debt that other council or the city has agreed to, I agree wholeheartedly, and I appreciate that you openly made that statement. As a city, we are a team, which means myself and our council and our employees in the city work together. Together, we achieve, is our mission statement. If we do not uphold our debt with fellow cities in the state of California, specifically in Stanislaus County, to me, we have a bad mark for our community, which means I have a bad mark because I am part of this community. I agree with Councilmember Casey that if we make the decision to pull away from a committee, that is your choice, although I would say that it's important for us as one of nine cities in Stanislaus County to remember that everything we do supports all nine cities. So, thank you, Councilmember. I do appreciate you making that statement. I agree. And I hope that the council will weigh very heavily that decision when it does come before you at future agendas, for you to consider how we are going to be viewed, not only in our city, but across Stanislaus County. The second topic I wanted to touch on briefly is, I also missed last week was the flea market and the planning commission's recommendation to the council. I was disappointed that the council overturned what the planning commission had placed before you. I understand that that is a committee that you lean to and specifically ask to make recommendations to help guide our community. That you didn't uphold and want to follow that. I was disappointed. I will tell you, as a citizen of Series, during COVID was a really nice time for me because I didn't have to listen to music going late in the night because there wasn't anything going on at the flea market. I can also tell you that during the times that there were events and music playing, that they went well beyond ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night because I listened to it on the weekends and laid in bed thinking, this isn't right. I called the non-emergency nine-one-one number, and at that time, years ago, dispatch told me that they had received approval to go late and that nobody had objected. Therefore, they could continue to play their music. So that's very disheartening to me. I am very concerned that now it is Sunday through Thursday till ten, if I recall the statements made correctly, and the weekends until eleven. Our law enforcement has a huge task to care for us safety-wise. It bothers me to no end to think that I'm going to be calling and it's going to pull these fine officers, even code enforcement officers, away from their job, keeping my family safe in this community, to drive down the street and tell people to turn their music down. That's not what law enforcement is all about. Their job is to try and keep us safe. And by burdening them with additional tasks like this is a concern to me. So I apologize. I was not here last week for this. I would have spoken at that time when it was on the agenda, but I felt compelled to come before you and share how I feel about those two topics. So I hope you'll take that into consideration, as I believe these will be coming back to the council. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly? Your decision to either pull away from Tuolumne River Lodge, and I'm not sure about the flea market. Is that cast in concrete?
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Appreciate it. Next person we have is Amy Claus, yard sales.
Hello, my name is Amy Claus, and thank you for hearing me out. Here at the yard sales, seeing how it's all going, I don't think it's been on the agenda lately. And we had one earlier. City ordinance right now is every six months. If you have one in like March, can't have another one till October or November. With the weather, it's impossible to have that. So if you, I propose we only have like two a year, if you want two a year. Ridiculous, but anyways, two a year, make it our way of having it, not having it months apart. You know, you could have four months apart instead of six months apart because the weather played a factor. And if you're going to get a permit and it's raining, you're out of luck. It's a way to get rid of downsides and stuff. It's a way for extra money. It's a way for people in the community to just, I don't know, make extra money for them to do whatever they need to do if you're on a stuck budget. This comes in handy. I know you were talking about a citywide yard sale at one point. Is that still on effect? I don't know. We haven't heard nothing about anything. And there was another lady here at one point, arguing about the yard sale. If you have a yard sale, it's not, you don't have a permit, you get fined and you get, you have to put it up. But we don't want to do that either. Any chance on changing the city ordinance or is it just out the window? You know?
My microphone wasn't on. We can give you an update about the yard sale. It hasn't came back to council yet. Thank you. Next person, I hope I don't get this name incorrect, Josiah. Welcome, sir.
Thank you to the mayor for recognizing me, as well as the members of the council, as well as the city staff working the meeting. Here, my name is Josiah Young, an attorney based in Sacramento. I'm here today with my client, Steve Kosaba. He's the owner, he's the local president. He's the owner of tow one, a towing company that operates here in Series. My appearance before you today is to seek another opportunity to enjoin in discussions, hoping to be able to engage with either members of the council, staff, whomever the city shows in my direction to be able to speak with on a direct level to try to get some understanding about the application of an ordinance and a local ordinance particularly, articulately around the towing ordinance. You know, it's my client's position that for years he's been unduly excluded from that list. Also come to light that recently there have been adjustments made to the towing list that seem to operate outside of the scope of the ordinance, outside of the left. To that end, he's asked for a fair shot, a fair opportunity to participate in providing services to this committee, which he cherishes, and to be able, you know, advance himself as a member of the community. And without really making the issue about civic ordinance violations or what others are doing, it would be our business that there's an opportunity to put someone to work. There's an opportunity for someone to qualify. When I mentioned for it unduly excluded, it's not without reason. You know, we have a factual basis for saying that. Reviewing the files and the records and all of the stuff that he's been compiling, attempting to get onto this list. You know, his trucks have been damaged or up to par. Service record is unblemished or is not something that is far to him being accepted. So to that end, I came today to just get a little attention, to be able to have a conversation with all those who afforded me that opportunity. I will say that I have reached out multiple channels, and I'm here today effectively exhausting my strength administrative remedies in the attempt to work directly with this city. Benefit of, I'm all involved, but you know, to certainly help my client get a clear understanding of the application of the local towing ordinance as to how companies are to come on that list, as well as his opportunity to join that list as a member. With that said, I don't want anyone to receive information. I do know the city has been in contact with me. I've been in, as I mentioned, been in touch with a few people. But I would have a business card that I would provide to anybody if someone would so.
Yeah, Mr. Young, please leave that business card and we'll go ahead and hand it down and we'll have somebody reach out. Thank you for coming today, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it.
You too.
Anybody else in the room that would like to make a comment?
Hey, Pratt is Series. I want to talk about the dog park I couldn't talk about last time. All the big rocks are winding up all of the lawns there, and the gravel is winding up all over the concrete. It's a safety hazard and a liability. I would like the gravel removed and dirt put there, which should have been done to begin with. Also, there's a big code sign on what time the park, it says the park is open at dawn to one hour after sunset. One of the council meetings, I was told six o'clock. Security tells me they were told seven o'clock. I have neighbors would like to get their dogs in the park before they have to go to work in the morning and camp. And a lot of time when we walk there, my dog is stopping at the gate because she wants them. Now, if you're not going to follow the codes, I need to have you post exactly what time because I see cars. When people show up there, if I'm close by, I tell them what time the park is opening. But they read the sign a lot. I see a lot of vehicles waiting there for a long time before they decide to leave because they think the park is open at sunrise. So if you're not going to open it up according to what the regulation says, I would like to have the timeline posted on the park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
You need to agree, sir. There's a problem probably everywhere in America, all over the county, no matter what county you live in, California, possibly other states too, addresses to the city council before. And I don't think the city council can answer the question, but I do think that Chief Perry can. And it goes back to getting some funding from the state, a grant or something for traffic control. I think everybody in this room, probably every day, goes to a four-way stop. Not so much the stoplights, but that happens too on right-hand turns, but the stop signs. I can't think of a day I don't come over here to this area and almost get into a collision because people blatantly just run stop signs. I mean, it's a virus. It's terrible. I would like to know too if there's, from the police department, there's ever been any serious accidents for people running a stop sign. Especially, you know, some people say it's because of the virus. I think they got the virus because they don't care about anybody else. But I'd just like to know if there's funding coming, how much of that is going to go to traffic control? You know, we could have probably used some of that, here we go again, that gazebo money for law enforcement or code enforcement. These people always get sidelined, seem like, when it comes to monetary things and other things get taken care of a little bit more with large amounts of money. These people are in dark straits. They can't cover everything, you know? And unfortunately, like we always say, you know, somebody's going to get, somebody's going to get killed. This is massive. I mean, everybody here sees this, you know? But we can't do anything because we don't have the money to set somebody out here on the streets and go all the different areas where they're prone to do that so we can stop from somebody losing their life or serious injury for the rest of their life. This shouldn't go on, especially in a city our size, you know? We can worry about the other parts of the country. We can worry about the other cities in our county, but we live here. We conduct business in Series. We have things that were conducted in other areas, but this is, most of our homes are here. Most of the people, you know, there's some people that don't live here in Series, but I want to be protected. I want my wife to be protected, my neighbors to be protected. I don't want somebody to die for some stupid thing because they don't know the word stop. I didn't bring my dictionary, but I know what stop means, and it isn't what these people are doing. And if you want a good example, the people that are over here in the administration, parking that parking lot there in the afternoon and watch through that four-way stop there. There's all kinds of cars go. They don't even stop. Some of them, you know, that Hollywood thing, they put on the brake or something. But the majority of them, I don't know, they got a second sense or something, and they run right through it. They don't even stop. And you can see the tires, the wheels moving. That's not stopping. So I hope we can get the money to take care of this. And you know, if we have to do some kind of a blitz thing and just full force on it, that will people finally get the idea that we don't want that here, obey the laws. That's what they're there for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Name, Brandy Meyer. Just real quick, so I have been on the Tuolumne River Regional Parks Advisory Committee for nineteen years. Started in two thousand and five, attending the meetings, and I did not make it to the last council meeting, special meeting. I'm here to ask formally that if there is going to be any discussion on a citizen advisory committee, you invite the citizen to the meeting to let us know. I didn't really appreciate getting an outside phone call from an outside party to let me know that there was some discussion at the last city council meeting on a committee that I've been on for nineteen years. If you could please let me know in the future, anything that has to do with the Tuolumne River Regional Parks Advisory Committee as the representative for the City of Series, I would appreciate notification. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Did we receive any emails? Okay, the public period comment section is now closed. Moving on, is there any conflicts of interest? Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine or nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted upon by a roll call vote. Are there any members of the council that would like to pull an item? Any members of the public that would like to pull an item? Seeing none. Was any email request to pull items?
No, there was no email.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council.
Take a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to our public hearing, item number twelve. Adding chapter nine, construction and demolition waste of Title VI, health and sanitation of the Series Municipal Code to establish administrative procedures and documentation compliance with Senate Bill thirteen seventy-four and the California Green Building Code standards, Cal Green, for the diversion of a sixty-five percent of the construction and demolition debris from landfills. This goes to you, Sam.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, I'd like to present the state law. The Green Building Code in particular requires that the city enforces mandatory construction and demolition waste recycling. It further requires the cities having, have a program for capturing waste diversion activities for reporting purposes. The proposed ordinance establishes administrative procedures for documenting compliance with the California Green Building Code standards, specifically the diversion of sixty-five percent of construction and demolition debris as part of the city building permit application. Permit applicants will be required to complete and submit a construction and demolition waste management plan and waste management plan report prior to and following a project completion on the WMP and WMPR forms approved by the city and included in the permit application package. Additionally, all weight slips, disposal receipts, and other supporting documentation will be required as well for verification before a final occupancy permit is issued. And I'm willing to hear if there's any questions.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none. Any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. We're bringing this item back for council discussion, questions, and action. Members of the council, do we have any comments or questions to Sam? Mr. Casey, you do go ahead. You're good to go.
You know, this public hearing is so familiar to me as other public hearings we have. Really not a public hearing in that I don't believe our city makes an honest effort to notify the public about hearings that are going on. This particular one is, it doesn't involve money, but we just do this meeting after meeting after meeting. Even as a councilperson, sometimes we don't get our agenda until late Wednesday, pick it up Thursday. The general public needs, I mean, that's what is called a public hearing. So we do this and then we vote on it. My suggestion is that we have another public hearing and try and get the public involved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Was there any additional comments or questions? Okay, bringing this back to council for a motion.
Move to approve number twelve on the agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
No new business, no discussion items. Moving on to council referrals. Council referral requests to have an agenda item placed on the future agenda pursuant to chapter two, city council meetings, J eight. City council referrals, determination of items on agenda. I have a council referral. I'd like to recommend we reallocate resources of the remaining ARPA funds that were originally intended to be used for the lining of CYB and the cost, the CYB And the cost, the CYB lighting, well, the, the cost for that will not cover the entire field. We're talking about the lighting here. With the Future Solar Power Initiative project in the works, I'd like to use the remaining funds towards public safety retention, and this is a referral for myself to be considered. Looking for a nod. Yes, on this side? Mr. Casey? Okay, thank you very much. It's consensus.
Come back on a future agenda.
That's correct. Mm-hmm. And I'll give you the language so that way you guys have it. Okay, thank you very much. Is there any additional council referrals? I assume Mr. and Ms. Rose Linda? You haven't pressed the button all, the whole day, so.
I did.
Know what I'm saying earlier.
Oh, had me scared. I thought my button was.
I wanted to make sure you're still there. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I'm still here.
Councilmember.
So this week when I was in planning, I was in there to talk to Julian about a few things. I noticed a lot of businesses were coming in for their business applications, especially with Alba Metito. They were sending their night businesses in for their business licenses, which is greatly appreciated, obviously. But I noticed most of them spoke Spanish, which means we were having to get staff, they were getting staff from another department to come in and translate. I was able to do some translations while I was there. And with approximately, I think there was about twelve to fifteen, the ladies were saying about a day. I was wanting to see if maybe we can get the application in Spanish. So what I did was I went through and kind of wrote in the words that we were using. Like, you know, the name of the business, you know, nombre del negocio, it was telephone number, the nombre del negocio. Pretty easy, basic language. We filled in the blanks. I checked with Avenue just to see if it was even possible, and they said they could, they can work with the city to create a timeline. And then in the meantime, we already kind of have a basic one that was written out in my writing, which I'm sure a whole nother conversation. But we kind of use the language that we're using for the people that are coming in, the businesses that are coming in, wanting to open their licenses or wanting to have, you know, whatever they're wanting to sell, wherever they want to sell in Series, and they want to do it the correct way. But I think it's also important that we're also trying to connect and stay friendly when it comes to our businesses. So I just want to see if maybe we can see if it's possible, maybe we can work with Avenue. They said it was possible when I talked to Carol, our rep, to create a timeline in order to get something like that, then using the language that's most often used with our businesses when they come into City Hall.
Would that, could that also include the Punjabi language?
Include other languages as well, yes. So, and I, I meant to go in there and I haven't been in again to translate it out. Punjabi, the Punjabi one.
Just a referral.
Are you making this as a referral or just making a suggestion to staff? If you can.
I think I have to do it as a referral technically. I think I've already copied you on my email.
Where are we moving forward?
Okay, so I just want to make sure everyone's on, on the, on the same idea of wavelength than I have, I've already.
We're, we're already moving forward with this part, so yes.
Appreciate that.
It would need to be a referral.
I appreciate that, so.
So you, so could you at least give us an update once it's all completed?
Yes, sir.
Rose Linda, we'll, we'll leave it as a referral, and then once the update comes back.
Perfect.
And that way, we both are on the same page.
Make sure everyone's okay.
Yeah, left to right. Mr. Casey? He said no. Okay, ladies and gentlemen.
And then I wanted to do one more, just at some point in time in the future, which was brought up today. If we can just kind of get an update on the yard sale ordinance, if there was something that maybe we're missing or something we need to address. If we can address this, we can have this either move forward or move forward and die or something, so it doesn't just keep coming up. We kind of have an idea of where we're going with that.
Do you mind if I ask a question, councilmember? Was that already as a referral, and then are we waiting? I know it's on, on our list.
I think it'll be more of an informational update for implementation because if memory serves me correct, we got council direction on that previously. We'll just circle back and make sure. So I would say the last two items will be more informational update for council on a future meeting.
Perfect, that would be great.
On the yard. So there weren't recommendations to change the code. There were only recommendations to figure out how to have a citywide yard sale. The rest is already codified, modified, I guess it's called. It's only, we were only discussing how we were going to figure out how to have the citywide yard sale.
If it's possible, I know that you guys are usually two weeks ahead on the agenda. If not, this next agenda, at least the first agenda on the first of the month, have these two items back, give you some more time?
Probably in July, I need to confer with the attorney person. We'll bring it back by.
Want to make sure, okay. Okay, we'll be asking next, next meeting. Thank you very much. Is there any additional referrals? All right, we're on a roll here.
Yeah, I have a referral for staff. I actually asked a while back when I believe we had our previous city manager about the leaf and limb and Berto Lotti contract to be brought back before us. I know that leaf and limb is picked up in the fall and then it stops very early in January. And right now, spring is ending, we're moving to summer. People are going to be trimming trees, cutting back bushes, and that's going to be put in our, our streets again. I would like to revisit, bring that back and see if there's something we can do about that.
I'm, I'm okay with it. Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else with referrals? Excuse me. So we'll move on to reports. I have no report. City council, left to right.
Yeah, I just want to report that last Tuesday started our Councils in the Park series. Sung House Blues and Gospel Band played. It was a great event. And I know that this upcoming, well, tomorrow actually, will be another band, the Honda Band. And there will also be a small gathering of older classic trucks and Impalas will be out there listening to the music. So if you want to come out, have food, listen to another local band, and maybe check out some classic cars. I know graffiti just happened. So a lot of those cars that were out there that week, this past weekend are going to be out here tomorrow night. So looking forward to seeing you guys out there if you can make it.
Vice Mayor? Councilmember Rose Linda?
Yes, I do. Okay, so housing, I know most of you probably have seen the recent report on Tuscany Village, and it has proven beneficial and positive results for the city. Although we're still, we also have had agencies, state agencies even reach out for assistance, which is nice. Although the work is going to be very slow, at least we have interest. The state has also reached out about trying to develop possible affordable housing in the single home division. So that's another conversation we have started, and I look forward to hopefully finding a way to make that happen here in Series. I do have contacts as well, and we've been discussing other opportunities, and I know I overwhelmed Julian's email a few days about opportunities with a lot of these developers that are interested in Series. So I'm happy to have that move forward and possibly even some affordable housing projects in other areas once that infrastructure is in place or land is officially annexed in. Regarding the economy, I have been trying to work with several businesses. I know a lot of residents have thrown out a lot of ideas and businesses, and they would like to see here in town. I have been reaching out. I know Julian's been doing an amazing job as well. Him and I try to contact at least once a week to see where we're at, so we can make sure we're on the same page. And we're getting some responses, maybe not the responses that I would like, but we are still trying to reach out. And a lot of that's going to also depend on our development and our growth here in Series. And we want to make sure that we have the growth to sustain another business here in town. Whether it's retail, whether it's industrial or agriculture, we just want to make sure we have everything possible. So we are working on trying to get additional growth here in town. Series, if you haven't looked, if you don't get the bids, you don't, you're not on their email list, I do get the emails. Series is currently accepting bids to work on the sidewalks over on Central and Hackett, which is on my side of town. Some of the students and children can walk safely on the sidewalk and not on the road, which is what we're seeing now on the south part of Hackett Road as well as on Central. So I would like to be happy when that project's done. I know Michael's doing a great job trying to get some grants. So it's not going to hit any of our budget and our funding. And that's going to be a safe route for students that are coming out of Don Pedro and Central Valley home or even to Blake or Kenzer if they're, you know, walking from that area. So I'm happy to see the great things that our engineering department's doing. Also with the Morgan and Hackett, I know I've had a couple emails with Chief Perry. We've had some discussions as well as Doug, our city manager. I think it's really, really important that we just maintain safety, make sure we're not distracted. We're seeing a lot of accidents there just from distraction or not just having a clear view. It happens a lot, and we just want to make sure that we save, save, especially in the hot summer when we're in a hurry to get home and into nice air conditioning. So just be mindful of when you're out in the roads. And then again, the hot air, hot air is going to be balloon festival is coming up, and I hope to see everyone out there by, I think it was six o'clock. Is that correct, Joey, on Saturday? So, and maybe he can give us some updates on parking and that kind of situation, but I look forward to seeing everyone out there. Just come out early in the morning. It's nice and cool. It's not going to be a hundred degrees at six o'clock in the morning. And I, I look forward to another great event this year. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. City manager? City attorney?
Nothing to report this evening, Mayor.
I'm sorry, actually, Ms. Martinez, I forgot that you had to repress your button. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did this following Mother's Day, and I know that I won't see everybody for a few weeks. I just wanted to wish all the gentlemen in attendance a happy Father's Day. Everyone, city staff, all their employees, happy Father's Day.
Thank you. Anyone from the department heads? Mr. Chavez, go ahead, sir. It's all yours.
Yes, I'd like to invite all councilmembers out to our hot air balloon festival on Saturday. Balloons will go off between five forty-five and six. It all depends on wind speed, so get there early for parking. Parking is going to be an issue. We do have one shuttle that's going to be rotating through three different local middle schools in the area. We are going to also have tether balloons going up. We know we have one, but possible two. I'll have more detail by tomorrow because tomorrow is our last time. We'll have an invitation by Thursday.
Mr. Chavez, what time do you plan on opening parking?
Parking will be opened by five.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, and that shuttle goes back and forth all day?
Yeah, so it'll be going back to like, Chavez is coming back, going back till twelve o'clock.
So it's Caesar Chavez, not Walmart like it was last year?
Walmart.
I just wanted to make sure. So Caesar Chavez.
We do have a map that's out. It's going to be scheduled, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, Economic Development just want to give a report, mayor, council, and the community. We did have the mural on Fourth and Lawrence that went in a couple weeks ago, so if you haven't been by there, you stop by and take a look at the mural. We have a job fair that's coming July eleventh in coordinating with the EDD and the chamber, Series Chamber, so that is coming up. We do have eleven projects pending. These projects are fast food, the gas station, car wash, and a few others that are on our list coming to the city of Series. Three of them already have pulled their building permits, so we should see some dirt moving in the next couple of weeks, if not sooner. We did have some that had to go back for revision, so hopefully within the next couple of months, we'll see some movement along the Mitchell Road Gateway corridor. We do have all of Villa. The houses there on Community Development Side that are in the process of being sold, so that's a good thing for our community. So we will have some new neighbors coming in soon. And then for Tuscany Village, we are in contact with the Acquisition Group, and they are in communication with also code enforcement on getting that cleaned up. And so hopefully we can see some movement in the next couple of weeks. I just wanted to give an update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will adjourn this meeting and go to closed session for a conference regarding labor negotiations. California Government Code five four nine five seven six. Agency-designated representatives are city manager Douglas D. Dunford and Human Resources Director Delilah Vasquez. Employer organizations are Series Police Officer Association, First Line Supervisors Confidential Bargaining Group, Laborers International Union of the North, American Launa, Mid-Managers Bargaining Group, and the Public Safety Managers. In addition to a conference regarding liability claims, California Government Code five four nine five six point nine five, and the claimant is Vicente Hopper and the agency claim against the city of Series. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in regard to this closed session item? Okay, seeing none. Everybody have a blessed day. Thank you.
Welcome back everyone on item number one, council has given direction on item number two, five oh. Denial.